Okay, good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, April 20th. Those of you, those of you joining us from home or remotely, welcome. I would note Councilmember Kedela is joining us remotely. Renee, I don't have, or maybe I will shortly here, but currently I don't have access on the, on the remote meeting. So just let me know if you have a comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed here with the agenda. Under the consent agenda, on the first page, there are two items that are not marked for discussion. Anything on those? Oh, yes, Steve? Is there, do we have a proclamation for today? I don't have one.
Those are both Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, we have two proclamations for Thursday. Yep. Okay, then continuing on with the second page of the agenda items, A3 through A5 are not marked. Any questions on those? Or comments? Okay. Okay, we'll move on with A6, which is marked for discussion.
Lynn County has asked City Hall to be a polling location for the city election in November. So this is, would just be to move the meeting from Tuesday, November 2nd to Monday, November 1st. If that was, it was either that or just combine the work session with the regular session. The past two elections, we had to do this. Council was in favor of just moving the work session.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Not clear? Go ahead. Yes, I am in now, so. For some reason on my computer, I'm not able to access it, but I have it on my phone, Renee, so you can go ahead and. Okay. Then we'll move on with A7 through 9. Nothing is marked, none of those are marked for discussion. Any questions on those items? Okay, A10?
Good evening.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you. I'm here just to kind of give some highlights on the quarterly report. And the report in its entirety was, of course, included in the packet. Overall, since the beginning of the fiscal year, the fund balance across has decreased 23.7 million from 86 million to 62.3 million. $21 million is attributable to the Capital Projects Fund solely. Majority of that, of course, is related to the derecho storm event. And you'll also recall that we did do a transfer in this last quarter of 2 million each from the Equipment Reserve, Road Use Replacement, and Sanitary Sewer Replacement Funds. Again, helping to cash flow the derecho. The General Fund has decreased 1.2 million. Last year at this time, that number was 2.7 million. This is due to expenses being charged to the Capital Projects Fund as a result of the derecho. And we'll see expenses moved in the following quarter as we are kind of sifting through what will be covered, what won't be covered by either insurance or FEMA. Overall, we would be expecting a decrease in the General Fund balance at this time due to the timing of property taxes at which we will stream a large disbursement here in April and May. So just some notable revenue items. Licenses and permits is at 122% of the budgeted amount. Again, related to derecho, you can kind of see there's a theme. Intergovernmental revenue is at 222.64% of the budgeted amount. That's because of the COVID-19 Iowa relief grant. Franchise fees are at 95% of the budgeted amount. And of course, interest revenue overall is down due to COVID. And you'll notice I'm not putting any numbers up. It's hard to read numbers on a slideshow presentation. So again, all this information is in the report. I'm just doing some brief highlights for the public and for council. On the expense side, like most organizations, the staff development, training conferences, registrations, travel is down due to COVID-19. Repairs, maintenance, and utilities is also down at this time. I would attribute that both to COVID-19 and derecho, as there were a lot of staff working remotely. And as far as building, maintenance, and repairs, a lot of that is being charged to the Capital Projects Fund as it relates to derecho. One definitely that is up is contractual services. No surprise that is legal and technology expenses. And then also notable in this last quarter, City Council did pass resolutions on March 18th, 2021, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds. The closing actually is not held until April, so that won't be, the numbers won't be reflected in this report. So we will see an increase in the Capital Projects Fund from that in the coming quarter. But overall, beginning balance of GO bond debt, which includes the annually appropriated debt, at the beginning of the fiscal year was 66.495 million. We are projecting that including the annually appropriated debt at June 30th, that number will be 69.890. If you exclude the annually appropriated, the annually appropriate is not subject to the statutory limit, we would be at 66.68%. Now, I still feel like I threw a lot of numbers out there. But are there any questions or anything else that you may have read in the report you'd like highlighted?
Any questions for Leanne?
I will say, future focus, you may have noticed the report has slowly starting to get longer. Like this time, we included debt. I think we started with just the General Fund. We started adding some of the other operational funds. The next addition we are working with Amal in the City Manager's Office on adding will be projects. So we're continuing to try and improve that to provide more detail.
Thank you. Yes, Steve?
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, since we talked about implementing this quarterly report, it has steadily improved. And I greatly appreciate, especially the narrative comments, you know, really bringing our, focusing our attention on the key areas and already bringing that into the narrative comments rather than having to pull it out of the numbers. So I think in doing it in that manner, it makes it a lot more easy, easier to use by us and by anybody looking at it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, on page three, there are no items marked. Anything in particular that anyone would like to discuss? Same with page four, there are no items, oh, I'm sorry, there's one item marked, which is F1. Prior to F1, are there any of those items anyone would like to discuss individually? Then we'll move on to community development, F1. Brookwood Estates.
Yes, I just, I just thought I'd give the council an opportunity to ask any questions they have on this development. This isn't what I would consider what we normally see in a development project, but we are, from a staff perspective, excited to see there's a mix of housing types, a range of unit size. And so you, you know, there was a lot of comments in the staff report. It was a pretty detailed staff report. So we still have another addition south of here that will, will come forward as a final site development plan. But I just wanted to give the council an opportunity to ask any questions if they seen them before the meeting. And then also just to point out that if I did my math correctly five minutes ago, I think there's 175 units being added with this development. So if you take that times, you know, your average size of a household, you're, you're looking at, you know, easily 300 population growth in this, in this one development. So it's exciting to see Brookwood Estates LLC, Chad Pelley is the, the developer on the project, and he's seeing a pretty solid takedown of the units. So it's fully expecting to see this, this happen rather quickly. So anyway, just a quick update on what's going on out there. If you haven't driven out east of 13 back in this area, I would encourage you to do so. There's not a lot of units that have been built, but there's enough that illustrate the variety that's going to be out there in that area. And it's, it's just not some place you travel to very often. So I'd encourage you guys to take a peek out there when you get an opportunity. So any questions, I'd just be available.
Questions for Tom? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Tom, I mean, we spent a lot of time when this was first came to us and spending a lot of time to understand how this was laid out. And certainly, I think we all liked the variety of housing that was in this development. So from going from the preliminary development plan to this final, is there, really are you seeing many changes?
No, in, in the staff report, there were a couple, we, they moved, like, I think they made the, they made the lots a little bigger, so they got one less single family lot. There's, they added some parking. I think we're seeing some of these units, they're wanting to see a little more parking. Remember the Scogbin Development, we, we wanted to see a few more parking spots as well. So they added those in, and then one was just a street name and some adjustments to some landscaping and the townhouse development. So other than that, it's been pretty straightforward, which is, we really appreciate.
Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you. Tom, on, on the staff memo on this, I see toward the end of the packet, it's page 10 of that, there are the different styles of homes that are being proposed for the development. I guess I just wanted to first say, are those, are those just examples of what will be built, or are those pretty close to what is being intended?
Oh, they're, they're pretty close to what's being intended. Yep.
Well, I just, I just want to, and maybe Steve said this, I just want to compliment everybody involved with the variety and what looks to be very, very visually pleasing structures.
We're, like I said, we're, we're excited to see a mix of housing styles involved out there. And yeah, you could, I think there's probably one, I don't know if there's a duplex bill yet. Oh, yeah, there are. Yeah, there, yeah, there's quite a few of them. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was thinking of the ones on the north side, but yeah, that's, so yeah, you, it, it's looking pretty good. It's starting to take form, because when you see it in a plant, you really don't get a sense about it. But if you drive around out there, you can kind of see how it all comes together.
Sounds like a field trip.
Okay, other questions on that item? Okay, any questions or comments on F2 or 3? Or move on to F4, Tom?
Yes, I, as we're sitting here, I just noticed in talking with, with Cash at the office that we're on payment 10 to HDR regarding the SidePass project. And I don't think we've really talked too terribly much about the project, so I just wanted to give a quick update. The project is, is, is almost complete from the perspective of design. The project's going to be let in June. Late start date is August, and it should have substantial completion by the end of this year, probably come back in the spring and do a finish of, of that project. So if you, if you recall, and I know these, these DOT projects take some time to put together and get to the point from A to Z, this is going to put some, going to put SidePass on Business Highway 151 extending from essentially 35th Street along 151 all the way out to Eagleview on the north and the entrance to Walmart on the south side. So it's a pretty extensive project, and it'll provide a lot of access and accessibility to some convenience-related items, Walmart, shopping, and so on, to folks so they don't have to walk on the gravel shoulder that there's current. So.
I've been waiting for this for, for a while. I think it's, it's really going to change the whole look of that, that front door to the city. And I think it's going to be a tremendous improvement. Exciting. Yes, go ahead, Will.
So is there any talk of potentially extending those even further? And the reason I ask is I was sitting at the stoplight this morning and watching somebody cross the intersection of 13 and 151 when they were at Walmart, they had a shopping cart full of Walmart stuff. I'm assuming to get to their home on the side of 13, is there any talk of crosswalks across the highway or continuing those out any further?
I don't, I don't know that we've had any specific remedies to that. It's difficult because it's under the DOT's jurisdiction. So how that gets designed is a little more complicated, but.
This is part of the, this is part of the trails funding, correct?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
Through the MPO as, as trails.
Mike can elaborate on.
With two primaries there, and with the delay it would cause with pedestrians, there would not be an at-grade crossing that would be allowed by the DOT. We do have a funding request that is in the, not in the fiscally constrained plan, but in the vision plan for a crosswalk that is either overhead or underground, similar to what we did on Grantwood Trail. That would be south of that intersection. So it's not funded at this point, but we know that that community is kind of separated from everything else. So it is a funding request that we do have out there.
With the, with the MPO?
Yes.
On the south?
Yeah, so Grant. Be on the, be on the north side of that intersection.
I think that'd be better because of the residential on the north side, yeah.
Grant, it's your job to get us that funding.
On it.
Okay, any questions on that item? So we should see substantial completion of this project by the end of the year? That's great. That's terrific. Okay.
And if not, it's Mike's fault.
All right. On the next part of the consent agenda, there are no items marked. If there are any questions, I'll, I'll have the mayor pro tem handle those. Are there any questions? Okay, moving on to the regular agenda, item A1 on, on page 5 is not marked. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to A2.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can you hear me okay?
Hi, Lon.
Yep, so this is a contract that's been proposed that we would enter into between the City of Marion and the Chamber of Commerce with Uptown Marion Main Street District. One of the keys to a successful streetscape and street reconstruction project is consistent, clear, and single-point communication with business owners. And so given that Uptown Marion has forged a longstanding relationship and a strong relationship with the businesses in the Uptown, we'd like to contract with them to be able to provide a lot of those coordination, outreach, and assistance services during the course of this project. It's going to take a long time to get it done, and having a single point of contact and building on those relationships that already exist would be a big boost in making sure that it's successful and helping the businesses be able to navigate it. For those of you that were on the council back when we did the Sixth Avenue project around 2013, we did something similar, but at the time, we contracted with the engineering firm to perform those services. So in that case, we even set up a dedicated website and provided weekly information, consistent updates, but everybody could go towards that one location. So we're seeking to replicate that. Main Street wasn't available as a separate organization like it is at the time, and it just seems like this would be our most cost-effective option to move something forward.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Yes, Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, Lon, do you, do you have any insight in how that will actually be made operational in terms of the personnel that are performing the task?
I would expect if it's not Brooke and they assign somebody else to it, then we would have them be part of the project team. So they'd be in on all of the construction meetings, attending the internal meetings related to the project progress, so they'd always be armed with the latest information. And then we'd count on them to coordinate with Amber to send out coordinated messages, either through their own cover or ours, but delivering the same information.
Well, as I think everybody knows, I had a concern about basically the communication strategy. And I just, my concern was founded on the fact that I just didn't have visibility to what was being planned. And Brooke, Amber, and others briefed me on this as a possible solution, and it really does satisfy any concern that I had, I would have had.
Yeah, with a project of this scope and its duration, it's going to be something that's just going to take some dedicated time to be able to focus to it. And really, if we were to try to ask them to do that without being able to scale up some resources, we'd be, in essence, stealing a staff member away from the chamber, because this is going to require a lot of dedicated effort during the construction period.
Okay, anything else? All right, A3 is, is not marked. Any questions on that? Moving on to A4. Hi, Emma.
This is related to Community Housing Initiative proposal that was presented to council last month. A little description about the project, it offers 40 units, two, two-bedroom units for seniors 55 years and older. Project will be serving residents at 30%, 40%, and 6% of the area median income. Location is going to be at intersection of East Post and closer to Collins Road. Project is going to be in Collins Road, urban renewal area. Next slide. Terms of review for the proposal, staff reviewed and found that the project is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It meets the goal of diversifying our housing stock, consistent to also with the urban renewal area objective, and that is simulating investment in affordable housing in Marion. Also met our but-for test, and also meets community, identified community need for low-income multifamily housing and for senior housing. Project qualified for low-income housing tax credit. Next slide. Staff will be recommending memorandum of understanding as a developer. Incentive is to fund a gap that the project had in their budget. Will be recommending 100% rebate for 10 years, cap at for 50,000, 450,000. That's the exact amount needed to fund the project. For the developer, memorandum of understanding will require or developer commitment going to be approximately 8.7 million invested in the construction of the project, and project is expected to be completed October of 2023. In terms of next steps, staff will come back to council with an amendment, an amendment for the urban renewal area to include the project and development agreement with the developer. Have any questions?
Okay, questions for Emma? Okay, thank you. A5.
Yes, Your Honor, this is me. So this one is a resolution for a 36-month agreement to extend our services with Marco Technologies. Just a little history with them. We started with them in 2015 after we had done an RFP, ordered the contract to them for managed services. It's fairly based contract at that time. In 2018, we asked for an extension of that, extended it for another three years. We're at that mark again. So I'm looking to extend that for the next three years, mainly because they've had a really proven, good proven track record with the city. They've always adapted their services, kept up with the times, and then their customer service ratings with staff have been just excellent. And anytime there's even a neutral, they address it right away. So they've got a good rapport with staff. It kind of, it supports our IT support model, which is a combination of full-time staff here in Marion, as well as, as a service for shared services where we can find efficiencies to do so. In your council packet, I included one of the monthly business reports from our HelpDust staff reports. But I just did want to point out that that's just HelpDust calls. There's a lot of bundled services that are really only visible to IT staff that come along with this, too. And this, just overall, the things that they provide for us is, that are contracted, provides a lot of efficiencies, because when it comes to products that we would normally have to go buy, implement ourselves, they are doing that for us. And we're just getting that, that piece of it that we need to use. A little bit about Marco's teams and their structure. They're made up of several different teams. And the, the nice thing about this is it provides a lot of different specializations and coverage for 24 by 7. The blue team listed here is, that's dedicated to the city specifically, but they have added a security operations center as well. And then this is something that really come to realization last year in 2020. I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but for seven months last year, we were without our, all of our staff. We were down at least one person for, from June to almost the end of the year. So having that contracted services really made a difference that we could lean on them when we were short, especially during the derecho. We were, three of us at that point in time, and two of them live in Marion. I live outside of town, so I wasn't affected. But pretty much that whole first week, they were just dealing with their own homes and stuff. So all of our service contractors really were able to help us out and work with one of them. This is just a list of the services in this contract, the schedule of products. Top one is the standard user, which is what you think of HelpDust 24 by 7, but the rest of these are all just different bundled services. And some of those we've talked about before, but there are some new ones in here, too, for this next contract period. And then how I kind of relate the cost of this, because it is, it is expensive. But when you think about $138,000 per year, it's about one and a quarter full-time staff, include benefits and everything. And it's that 24 by 7 coverage and all the diversified, you know, scheduled products and that catalog that we get, that's kind of a complete different way of approaching IT for that period of time that we could not do, you know, with our normal staff, eight by five, Monday through Friday. And that's it for me. Questions?
Questions? Yes, Grant.
Yeah, Terrell, could you go back to the slide that was, had intrusion detection?
Yep.
Yeah, that one. Is that, is that real-time monitoring?
24/7, yep.
Okay. Good, thanks.
One of the new ones, yep. Excited about that one.
And just to be clear for everyone, this is a budgeted item?
Correct.
So we've accounted for this big expenditure. It's a big expenditure, but I think everybody sees the importance of it, that.
Just to comment from my perspective, with the small amount of experience in this area, these services are absolutely critical so that we don't have ourselves in a situation where our network environment is, is disabled. And we've, it seems like once a week, you read about a municipality that all of a sudden is being held, held up for ransom. And because their network has been disabled. So this, this kind of service and service level is absolutely essential to continuity of operations.
Thanks, Grant. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Terrell. A6 and A7 are not marked for discussion. Are there any specific questions on those? Not, we'll move on. Oh, are you, are you coming up for A8, Leanne? Okay, so we'll move on to A8.
A8 is a resolution approving a revised investment policy. And I just kind of want to bring council up to date on what's been happening with that since the last time we talked about it. Just want to quickly point out that this is part of the strategic plan focused area to efficient and effective government. The goal of creating additional new revenue through alternative resources and the strategy being to maximize investment revenue strategies as outlined in the revised investment policy. We are a little bit behind on this due to absences in finance. I think at this point, it's been made known public that both, there are two staff members that had a baby in the last couple quarters. So we're just a little bit behind, but we're still making progress. If you recall, we actually had a discussion at city council way back on August 4th, before the storm regarding the policy. At that time, we had asked for the committee, the investment oversight committee to be reestablished. And November 5th is when the appointments were made. So since November 5th, we've been meeting about once a month. I owe a big thank you to council members Sternad and Harper for your leadership on this committee as well as accountant Brian McKenzie, while I was out on leave. And for the committee members for volunteering their time and expertise as we reviewed the policy because I am in no way an expert on investments. The policy itself, we adapted from the City of Dubuque's policy, which was not only the most recent example of the ones that I found, but also they had obtained the certificate of excellence award from the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States. Other examples, just so council is in tune, reviewed were City of Ames, City of West Des Moines, Urbendale, Cedar Rapids, and Lynn County. And I will invite Randy and Grant to both comment on anything they want. But I felt like the top two discussion areas were on the diversification section and whether we should include a performance metric or a benchmarking metric. So the diversification section, we had initially just started with a 25% limit on one particular investment item. And we added some parameters in that section, as you can see in the policy. And then as for performance and benchmarking, we had a long conversation about the difference between private investing and public investing. Public is very limited on what can be invested in, in the first place. But furthermore, safety and liquidity are also very important in government. And honestly, it's hard to benchmark. So we had a lot of discussion about that. I don't know if council member Sternad or Harper want to add anything about the discussions that we had held.
I would defer to the professional.
Thank you, Leanne. I'll just add a couple things to it. First of all, I'm very, very proud of the group that's been put together here. We've got so much talent and tenured on this committee. It's, the city is very fortunate to have these individuals and leadership within the internal city staff. So kudos to you folks. As we kind of went through that, we did break that down a little bit. There are times when municipalities are sitting on cash deposits. Though the city is not designed to profit by any measure with investments, the city does hold a fiduciary responsibility of when those assets are being held, if there are opportunities to hedge times, that those would be appropriate. So sending on a lot of other 401, or excuse me, 503(c) plans. The scope of how you can invest money is going to be somewhat drilled down compared to the private sector. So liquidity is number one, and we've just witnessed that going through the derecho. So you would have to be able to liquidate some of those assets without taking any type of penalty. It primarily focuses things more around bond sectors, CD rates, local savings accounts at the local banks. But as we see the prime lending going down and the Federal Reserve's stating that they're going to somewhat be holding this pattern for a while. We're not going to see CD rates coming back up. So as we kind of looked at this city policy, we did do some comparables to other cities across the state. And I would echo the same thing in taking a look at Dubuque. They've, they've, they've received awards and nominations for their background. So we kind of went in and just picked a few of these things back and forth, had great discussion. Concerns that would give us a little bit of reservation to maybe modify something either up or down a little bit, but staying within the guidelines of the state that are set forward. One of the questions that did come up is, is what do we, what do we take a look at from a management standpoint as far as assets go? You know, as a professional, in the professional world of personal finance and business, you would try to allocate and understand the measurements of success. And that would be things that would be benchmarked against maybe the S&amp;P 500, the Dow's. It could be the Russell 2000. You can pick your benchmark. Typically, a municipality would follow something very, very conservative. You know, you're only looking at something between a 2 and 3% rate of return. So those benchmarks. So one of the questions that Leanne is asking here is, is to find that we have been successful in what we are doing, should there be a benchmark that we want to try to index ourself against? Or do we just merely go by the standpoint of saying that, you know, a 2 to 3% rate of return would be fair, equitable for the city? And follow that path? So there's a couple of different processes that we can follow here. And the, we wanted to maybe bring that against the other council members for some input on that.
And the other thing I will add is there is not a benchmarking parameter in any of the policies that we reviewed.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, Steve. Well, it's really going to come about on the next one, about where we start talking about the recommendation of having a, hiring somebody or paying somebody for some banking and investment services. So if we go ahead and do that, if you're not finding any benchmarking, which again, I'm going to say that kind of surprises me because I think there's benchmarking. It seems like there's benchmarking for everything out there, but I know you've, you've done your homework on that. But if you're going to go down that path and we have somebody there, how are we going to determine that that person or firm is doing what we asked them to do? So a lot of times, if you have, if you're paying for investment services, you've got a benchmark to look against to see how are you performing? Or how are they doing on the investments as, as the benchmark is performing? So, I mean, I haven't looked ahead. I can't remember what criteria you're going to have on how you're going to, what you're going to put in the RFP for how you're going to measure the success of that individual. So the benchmarking and that kind of relate, that's why I'm bringing it up now.
I'm pausing for a minute to see if Randy or Grant wanted to respond to that because we did have a long, long discussion at the committee regarding that. There are metrics that you can use. I mean, for instance, in the GFOA financial policies book, the benchmark that they would recommend would be following some type of a treasury security and how you are measuring against that. I think what we had talked about as a committee, I mean, the goal of the committee then eventually would be meeting quarterly. So we would be following and watching those statements and making sure we're hitting targets. I think we had also talked about, well, maybe we consider putting a benchmark in there in the future once we understand more and how this will work. I mean, Randy, this is more your expertise. You remember how we had had a talk, a conversation about, well, depending on who we get, they might follow a different benchmark? And so we didn't want to tie it in policy?
Sure, there was, there's a few things to answer your question there, Councilman Jensen. On the, on the private sector, you would take a look at, you know, the, the compensation from the advisor that, or the institution that would be handling those would be based on profits or it would be assets under management. Again, a little bit of difference when you talk about the municipalities. If the council decided that we wanted to receive 2% on all assets under management, then we, that would be our benchmark. All institutions, depending on what institution we take a look at, whether they would be ones that are factored more in treasury bills. I guess what I'm trying to say here is there, to answer your question, they are benchmarking so many different categories and so you can kind of pick those. But I want to circle back around to say again, the city's prime goal should not be to say that we should be looking or achieving for a 3% or a 4% rate of return. Because when we do that, then we do set the parameters based on what the city's risk level is. And those are the things that kind of concern me a little bit. We do want to say that the manager needs to be held accountable or the advisor or the firm that is, that is doing so. But there's so much more to that. It's a very broad brush because you have to maintain those assets being in liquid. And are we, is our portfolio well diversified? Do we have bonds maturing at different times? Do we ladder things out? And it's a little bit more about total assets under management as opposed to the risk, the rate of risk for return. And that's where the real concerns come into play. Again, too, not to say that we should be mirroring any other cities, but there are no other cities that we could find that have found in their policy that they wanted to call out a benchmark. Because in some instances, you may find that your benchmark has been skewed or had been altered as to what the objectives of the city council and the leadership are wanting to move forward towards. It could be growth or it could be more bond rated items, things of that nature. So I'm sorry, we don't have a direct answer to that because it's a very broad definition from a municipality standpoint. But as far as managing and measuring the firm that would be elected to do that, that would have to be just reviewed on an annual basis to see what the total services and expenses, expense loads would be rated to that and overall, take a look at the portfolio in general.
Yeah, and alluding to A9, I actually hadn't said anything about that yet. But that's kind of our next step. Our next step would be to solicit proposals for assistance in the actual development of the RFP. I actually had, before bringing anything to council, I'd had some conversations with other finance directors, most notably Tim Stiles, City of West Des Moines. Similar in size as far as staff level is concerned. And they actually did an RFP for their banking services and ancillary services, including investment services. And I took a look at the RFP that was created by that firm and it goes way beyond anything. I mean, miles apart compared to what we had put together in previous years for banking services. And I am including banking services in that because our banking contract is actually up. We have one more one-year extension from June. So it will be up June 30th, 2022. But I'm strongly recommending that we kind of follow West Des Moines' lead there and let the professionals develop an RFP because they are extremely difficult to compare. I know from doing the last one that I did, there's the if and buts, different scenarios as to we charge fees for these things and overall, here's the rate. We are going to waive fees, but here's the rate. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison and it gets very complex. So that's why I'm proposing what I'm proposing. I don't know if there's questions on that, but that's going to be our next step. And alluding to what Randy was saying about having one individual or one firm handle all of our investment portfolio, there are several advantages to that. One, of course, being the fact that you get that comprehensive report of your investments. And then also, right now, I don't know if council is aware of this, but we have a portfolio with Wondell Reed, investment broker, that we have followed for many, many years. As far as fees, it's a, it will be a flat fee going forward. And we have not, what I was going to say, we have not done an RFP for investment services in at least probably 30 years.
Wow.
So there's no expertise internal on that.
Yeah, I would just say further that, you know, again, I have complete confidence going forward that, in fact, I would encourage, I would hope, the investment committee is, and there's a lot of expertise on this investment committee. So I look forward to them continuing, meeting quarterly and really playing a key role on making the recommendations and decisions on how the investments and the policies and all of that are doing going forward. I mean, the city council maybe needs to make a final decision at times, but I would hope the majority of the effort and actions are done by that committee because that's where a high level of expertise is, is on that group, not on the city council.
Yeah, and furthermore, just again, sharing more about the money manager model and how that works. In conversations with West Des Moines, he said it's as easy as him picking up the phone and saying, you know, we just received our property tax dollars. I'm going to give you half to invest. We're going to need them in six months. So it's not staff having to solicit bids for CDs or any of that. It's just completely 100% managed for us. We did have a conversation at the committee level about whether we could handle laddered CDs internally. And of course, I strongly suggest that we don't do that because we have a lot of workload and that's an easy thing to let slip and let the CD just roll rather than be bid out and getting the best rate. And that's essentially what's happened. I mean, our money's been sitting rather than being invested. So any additional questions?
This is a good process that you're doing here. My question is, like, logistically, is this committee then in an advisory role to you? Or to the city council? How is it, maybe Lon answers that, I don't know. But so just so we know, like structurally, how, what this committee, what their place is.
I'd have to pull open the resolution again. I, I honestly haven't looked at it in a while, but I think ultimately they are advising us on strategy. So us, to me, is we're a partnership too. So if they're advising me, they're advising you and they always could provide recommendations straight to council.
But I mean, their input, their input informs your decisions
Correct.
in your official capacity
Yes.
in your role.
Correct.
And so the ultimate person responsible for those decisions is you
Correct.
in your capacity. Okay. And if there's anything that needs to be adopted as a policy that comes to city council?
Right, you guys set the parameters under which we can operate.
All right, I just want to make sure everyone's clear again, you know, that it's all in the open as to what the role of this group is, what this committee is and what, how they fit into the picture, so.
We're really excited to move this forward.
Yeah.
Spent a lot of years and.
Great, thank you. So are you going to talk about A9 or did you already cover that?
I just did.
Yeah, okay. Any questions on A9? So officially, we've covered it. All right, so we'll move on then. Thanks, Leanne. Public safety, there's nothing marked or parks. That item is not marked. Any questions on those? Before we get to Mr. Barcaloo, who has every item marked. Okay, nothing on public safety or parks? All right, then we'll move on to engineering. E1.
Yes, Your Honor, so E1 and E2. So we'll have the public hearing on Thursday. We received bids for the Seventh Avenue project. We had four bidders. The low bid was from Rocky Construction at $6,898,626.31. It was 108.2% of the engineer's estimate. Staff is recommending that we proceed with that contract. The start date for this, they'll have a notice to proceed after the bonds and insurance is turned in, which will be at the first meeting in May. And then there are milestones with $2,000 per day and incentive and disincentive. So again, we're using the carrot and the stick.
Okay. Questions on E1 and E2?
There's obviously a detailed breakdown of the bid tab in your council packet. It's available online as well.
Great. One step further in this process. Okay, E3.
So the next few items are somewhat related, but we'll, we'll take each one at a time. So the first one is just setting the public hearing for May 6th for the amendment to our Code of Ordinances. And there's a draft that is put in the council packet that shows the current Code of Ordinances and the Iowa DNR's recommended changes to Chapter 176. Legal is currently reviewing that as well. But if, if council wants to go ahead and review that, like all ordinances, it will take three readings to adopt. So the first reading would be on that May 6th date. So this would adopt the new FEMA flood insurance maps, the actual flood insurance study, and then the actual maps themselves. And the maps are what it's used for the flood insurance, whether you're in a special flood hazard area or not. So then the next. So then the next, E four could potentially play into this item. So E four is whether or not city council wants to include the cumulative substantial damage definition to the ordinance. There were some notes in there regarding it, but it's not technically in there at this point. FEMA came and did a site visit to review our records to make sure our codes were up to their standards before the derecho. And one recommend, one recommendation that they had at that time was to add this definition to our ordinance, but it was not a requirement. So I'll try and explain it as easily as I can. And if Mr. Sternad wants to correct me, being in the insurance industry. But the, an easy way to explain it is, let's say that you have a house that's in the special flood hazard area and it's worth $100,000. You get flooded and there's $40,000 worth of damage. Because you're not at the 50% threshold, the flood insurance would kick in. They would pay for it minus your deductibles, get you back to how you were prior to the flood. Let's say some, a few years later, it happens again. Again, you have $40,000 worth of damage. You're below the 50% threshold, how it is today. So again, FEMA pays that money. So there's a liability out there that every time you're flooded, as long as you're below that 50%, you have to keep paying it. However, it's, if it's changed to a cumulative substantial damage, you've now had 80% damage total of that 100,000. And now you have to bring it up to standards, which means you need to bring it, elevate it so that it's above that flood elevation or it need to be bought out. And whether or not the council wants that in there. So we don't need to have that decision made today, but at some point, if you want that in the ordinance, then we need to write it during one of the readings to put it in there.
What's the practical impact of that?
What's that?
The practical impact of that?
The impact is if, if you are repeatedly flooded, that house may not be there anymore. So obviously FEMA wants that because they want to, they don't want to have to keep paying that liability that's out there. We have a few that do get flooded a few times. It wasn't very many. I didn't put in how many we had. I know I have an email on it and we can talk about it on Thursday as well. But it does add some workload to staff to keep track of that. You know, we have to have some kind of tracking software so whether we can include that in New World or some other tracking agent, agency through the GIS or some kind of system, but we would have to somehow keep track of that. So it's not really, other than staff time, a big impact to the city. Obviously, those property owners are not going to like that if you make that a clause.
Because it makes them eligible to be bought out?
Or it makes it so that if they don't make the modifications, then they would no longer be eligible for FEMA flood insurance. It's not practical for all houses to be elevated one foot above the base flood elevation.
Right. Okay, I just wanted everybody to understand what the practical impact of adopting it would be. Yes, go ahead.
So FEMA is recommending that we add this to our ordinance?
They are.
So what if we don't? Is there a repercussion from FEMA or?
Not at this point, there is not. Again, they're the ones that have to pay it out, so they would obviously like to stop paying it out. But there was no requirement to add it. Now, that could change down the road, but at this point, that's not a requirement.
Your Honor.
Just go ahead.
Mike, I'm just going to share a little information here on the correspondence that we've had with the DNR. But just to give the rest of the council some perspective, there's currently 91 policies in Marion that are a flood issued policy for residential policy holders. Total coverage is $24.7 million. The majority, 70 of those are going to be for single family residential structures. 12 of the policies are currently located in the SFHA. What this accumulated value thing does is it impacts the homeowner. And Will can talk to this topic a little bit more and that's what has to be disclosed on a retail or resale value of a home on what's been impacted. But as there are a number of occurrences go up, the claims are going up. Obviously, the cost of materials are going up. FEMA naturally would like to be out from underneath us. They would like to say that the severity of frequency is getting to the point where they want to now start striking these off one by one. Policy, flood policies that we issue today, we write a lot of those through fidelity. Security is another big writer of flood insurance. Just to give everybody a little bit of a perspective, $100,000 flood policy can run anywhere between, in this geographical location, anywhere between $700 and $1,100 a year. Now that's in addition to your primary homeowner's policy. So the flood will only give you structure and partial contents coverage. It does not provide you the other perils of loss, which would be fire, theft, wind, hail, things of that nature. So when we issue a flood policy, the flood zones are labeled alphabetically. If you're in XYZ, those particular ones will actually be discounted. And of course, too, your city has to be a participating municipality to FEMA. So to give a little perspective on that, if we were to go to a cumulative deal or if somebody had excessive losses and they no longer can purchase a FEMA sponsored policy, to have that same policy on the private sector would be $3,000 a year in addition to your normal homeowner's policy. So, and again, too, those are values based on 100,000. So we know what our average homeowner replacement value is here in the city. So these are huge issues, huge topics. And as FEMA wants to, or the DNRs, as they're trying to redo these flood maps, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, they're wanting to bring the flood elevation up by two feet?
Not with this map, that's a future discussion.
That's a future discussion, thank you. Sorry for the confusion there because there's a lot of things moving in this background here, so.
So what's on the screen now, just to give you information? So I actually requested what I would have to pay. So this is actually the maximum that they can put in there. So you can see my premium would be $572 per year. It has building coverage of 250,000 and that's actually the maximum amount that they allow to be insured by FEMA and then 100,000 in contents coverage with a deductible of 1,250. And I'm not in the special flood hazard area. So the 100 year elevation does hit my backyard, but I'm like five feet above the base flood elevation. So even with that, that low risk that I have, that's the type of rate that I would have to pay on mine just to give. And I don't know if it's based on credit or anything else, but that's part of an FIP program. So again, that is, so like the 70 policies that Mr. Sternad talked about, I'm guessing that they're in that area where he's talking that amount, so.
So the main benefit from adopting it would be to FEMA?
Yes.
And is there any consequence to the city? I mean, I know they said it's not required, but is there any consequence to us, any negative consequence if we don't adopt it?
The only thing is if we wanted those also just for the complaints that we would get of, you know, if it was a property owner that continually got flooded all the time and they refused to buy out to eliminate some of those phone calls because if it's a grass lot versus a property having to deal with that, other than that inconvenience of continuing to deal with that property owner, I don't see another, other value to the city.
Or negative?
Yeah.
A negative to the city? From not adopting it?
Right.
So how, if I have a house and it's been flooded once and it had, in the example you used, $100,000 house and it had $40,000 damage. And I did that once and years later, I have another $40,000 damage. What has to be disclosed to individuals that may be looking at buying that house? What is the disclosure to those individuals about buyer beware?
So I'll have Will speak to it a little bit if he can. But one thing that we do, like for new houses, if we know they're in the special flood hazard area, is they actually have to provide an elevation certificate that shows what the base flood elevation is and what is the lowest opening of the house. And we have all those records as well. So if somebody wanted to know what their elevation was compared to that house, assuming that the realtor informs them to look for that.
That's right, in the property disclosure, you have to disclose if it's in the flood plain or not. Plus, if, when you go to get insurance on the property, your insurance agent's going to say, oh, hey, you're in the flood zone. So they're going to look at that when they're.
So if I'm buying.
Quotes on your insurance.
If I'm buying that house, would it be disclosed to me that it's had $40,000 flood damage?
It's supposed to because there's a, there's a place also on the property disclosure if there's any insurance claims on the property.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen some of these examples and of course, we don't hear about them in the Marion area, but when I know when we've had a lot of these major floods south of us, here in 2008 and other areas. And I hear about some of these stories about somebody still wants to keep going back to that house and going back to that house because they like the view, yet FEMA keeps paying all this damage. Again, to me, it doesn't make any sense why they keep wanting to, you know, they, I know why they may want to stay there, but it doesn't make any sense to me for FEMA to keep paying for flood damages just because those individuals want to be stubborn and live in that, that site. So, I mean, I would be in support of, of making the change, but I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of other issues and factors, but on that basis, I just don't think it ever makes sense to me to continually, repetitively pay for flood damage on the same property.
So Mike, this, adding this language that FEMA is recommending and it's on page 10 of this particular memo. This really ultimately is an incentive for the homeowner to either remediate the situation and to lessen future flood impact or it gives us an entry point or FEMA an entry point for buyout and limit their liability?
Yeah, because if you can think about even your insurance company, let's say you get a rock chip, you know, most insurance companies pay for that no cost because they don't want the windshield to go out. Similar to the flood insurance, if you can rectify the situation and make it so that you stop getting flooded, they would much rather have that than the alternative.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other thoughts or comments?
So how it's written is on Thursday is to direct staff to include it. So if council chooses not to do that, you'd either have to vote it down or modify it to not direct staff to do it. So we always write it in the positive and then however, council wants to direct staff.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead.
I think I said incorrectly that it was on page 10 of this particular memo packet. It's on page seven and it's shown as an insertion with an explanation.
Other comments or observations? Yes, go ahead, Will.
So if it's an amendment to the ordinance, if we direct, if we do direct staff to include it, it's amended the ordinance so that it'd be our public hearing on it?
So if you directed us to do it, we would include it with the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay. So there would be, people would be able to, citizens would be able to.
Yep, they would still have three readings on.
Yeah, thank you.
The, the public hearing won't specifically say that because it already had to be published, but it'll just say that there's a proposed amendment to the ordinance.
Go ahead.
Mike, do we have clarification on this moving forward? If we do amend this, do we start with zero? Or do all claims in past be brought forward? And then those who have had those, I'm more concerned about those who have had claims and where they stand with the new amendment or the new ordinance?
I can reach out to the DNR and FEMA and find out where that would start. I don't know if it would start, I don't know if it goes back in time or if it would start when the ordinance is adopted. I'd have to check on that.
Okay. My only concern with that is we've, we've, we've got a fair few houses that are on Indian Creek and Road backed up to Indian Creek that have flooded numerous times. And these are above average, or I should say above, above average pricing homes. I mean, some of these, and not only those, but throughout the community, we've, they're all relative and that concerns me just a little bit on where they stand in this ordinance change. So I think that they need to be prepared and aware to an accumulative run versus a claims by claims basis.
And I don't know if FEMA can necessarily provide us the information of the properties that have been, have had several claims in the same property. I don't know how much they can divulge to us.
Sure, no, I understand that. I, you know, in a perfect world, would identify every one of these that have had claims and they would be put on notice. You know, that'll affect market value and everything else of those real, you know, real estates, so.
Anything else? Okay, E five?
So E five, we don't have to have a decision on this right away. This is just something to think about. So basically, the community rating system, I know Grant attended the webinar that was last week and Steve did as well. I included the PowerPoint slides as part of your council packet to kind of review that. So what that program is in a nutshell is by the city stepping up and doing above and beyond, and some of those things we may already be doing by the state standards that we have to have, there's a potential that we could save the policyholder money. So there will be additional staff time. So the example that was given was the City of Clive. They spent 400 hours to get their program going and then it's another 40 hours each year to renew that. They are also at a point where they also say the homeowner's 25% and I think they're at a rating of like five, where we would probably start at eight or nine if we wanted to do it and then work our way to a lower rate. This, one thing that's important is we do have 91 policies, the 24.7 million dollars worth of policies. However, only 12 of those are in the special flood hazard area. So the other ones would likely be maxed out similar to the insurance policy that I showed you of that, less than $1,000. So not that a savings on that isn't important, but it would be less of a savings and it's actually capped at either five or 10% depending on what rating we get. If we can go, I think, two slides. So these are the different classes. So like I said, I believe Clive is a class five. And so basically, the more points you get, the lower class you go. So if you're in the special flood hazard area or the SFHA, I mean, you can save up to 45%. But I don't know that there's any cities in the state of Iowa that are at class one. Most, the lowest that I know of is around that class five. So that it would be a 25% savings in the special flood hazard area and a 10% for the non SFHA. So for example, the policy that I showed you for my house, I could save up to 10%, but that's the max. So I don't get to save the 25%. It's only those 12 policies that would save up to 25%. So that's important to understand too. So there is some cost savings, none of it the city will see, but we will expend tax dollars and staff time to do the program. So, and again, I don't need an answer today. It's written as directing staff to join the system. But again, we can take time to think about it. I'm not looking for more work. We have plenty of projects going on, so it could be something too that we decide to do in a following year or something like that, when there's less construction projects going on. But I at least wanted to give this in front of you so the council can see this because this does save the citizens, the voters, money if they happen to be a policyholder. But again, it's not a huge number. I know Grant wanted a cost benefit ratio and it's a little challenging because there's cost to the city, but there's no real benefit to the city, so.
Okay, so do we want to have a discussion on it now and give a direction whether or not we want to keep it on the agenda as it is for Thursday or take it off the agenda? But if you aren't ready to make that decision, well, Grant was first and then we'll go with Steve.
Yep, yeah, thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Um, Mike, once we would enter into the community rating system program. Um, and we're steady state with that year in and year out. Does, is, does that program or other programs that are related to it? I help us identify where there are sources of. Flow restrictions that. If we remove them at our cost, it would reduce the probability of flooding?
Um, being in the CRS would not necessarily help us do that. We could just do that on our own. We wanted a special hydraulic study to be done. We could pay to have that done. Um, we're looking at the FEMA maps. I mean, any bridge that's built now has to be what's considered a zero rise so that we're not causing a bottleneck. Um, so that's something that could be done on our own without the CRS program.
Is there, i- in order to do that kind of work, uh, no pun intended, but downstream of joining the CRS? Is, um, is there FEMA money available or federal money available to do that work go forward?
There, there's possibly some grants out there. As Mr. Sernad alluded to, there's already a new study being done before we've even adopted the study that we have now. Um, and so that was a request, I believe by Cedar Rapids. So that's something that we may even be able to ask FEMA to look into things further. So. Uh, there is a possibility, but I would say it has nothing to do with the program. The program's more for the benefit of the policyholders and what we're doing to. To get more points so that we can have higher savings.
Yeah, I think of what I was really searching for is if we enter the program, does that then. Um, obligate us for future projects of a related nature, I guess is what that was.
No, if, if we wanted to get in at say class nine and we wanted to stay at class nine, there's nothing to require us to do anything more than that. Other than citizens wanting to save more and the city to do more.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I think the presentation was very helpful. Uh, and what it kind of indicated, at least when the gentleman from Clive was talking. Is that most cities, and I know Marion's already doing a lot of things that are already generate a lot of those points. Maybe you just need to go through and do the documentation. But Clive, obviously it was absolutely necessary, kind of like Cedar Rapids where they've got. A river going through the middle of their city and they had not only a lot of housing affected by it, but a lot of manufacturing. Uh, areas as well. So, uh, as long as we continue, unless the, the flood maps change, to me, that's the biggest. Question mark as to how many more might be affected in the future. So I did a rough calculation. I had the same question the other day as Grant. I said, what's the cost benefit? To me, that's how you got to look at some of this as well. And I did a rough calculation here. I didn't know that I, with you telling me only those twelve. Would get that discount now that I understand that. And I did a rough calculation taking Randy's range of seven hundred to eleven hundred per year, averaged that at nine hundred. And you're going to end up with a total amount of about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, premiums paid. So that's on those twelve. Now then, obviously that number may change in the future as flood maps change. But as you're looking at it today, we might be talking about how much impact would we have on thirty thousand dollars of premiums? If that's ten percent, gee, we're saving them three thousand dollars, but the city's spending a whole lot more. And I know once you get it going, you're only spending forty hours or forty hours a year. But initially, you know, I was certainly, that does, to me is not quite the cost benefit that I would be looking for. Uh, maybe if the map changes in the future and all of a sudden we have a lot more subject to it and a lot more may come into play. But to me, to save our citizens, to spend all that time and effort to save initially three thousand dollars. Is not a good cost benefit that, that I would support. Initially, I thought it would be a whole lot more as I started looking at the numbers. But I didn't know what the cost of premiums and all that would be and who's subject to it. But as I understand that, it, the numbers don't, if I'm understanding the numbers correctly. Uh, I'm not sure they make sense.
Yeah, so it, it would be the, the twelve properties that are in the special flood hazard area could be anywhere from zero to forty-five. And then the, the remaining seventy-some, they would get the five to ten depending on where we're at.
Yeah.
So.
So what's the feeling? Yes, go ahead.
So just to be clear, it's total of ninety-one homes that could be positively impacted by this work, right?
Um, we had, we have ninety-one policies in Marion. So yeah, there would be ninety-one that could at a minimum save five percent. Depending on what level we get to.
Okay.
Okay, any particular feelings on whether this should stay on the agenda for Thursday? Yes, Grant.
Well, maybe, um, can you clarify how frequently is the, are the FEMA flood maps updated?
Um, so it varies. The, the one that we're replacing, I believe, was two thousand nine or twenty-ten. So it's, it's been some time, but like I said, they are already doing a study that'll be potentially adopted in two years. Um, and that one could have much larger ramifications depending on where we end up with that. Uh, this one, there wasn't too much for change. It got more accurate, but there really weren't. Uh, a bunch of properties that were added into the map this go around.
I was just wondering then if we should. Reevaluate this whole question with the next issue and some maps and decide, you know, are, do we have more properties that are impacted? Because I think you said usually the FEMA flood maps don't encompass less real estate.
Typically not, yeah. Um, and it's something that we don't have to do it when a, when a map is adopted. It can be done at any time. It's just while we're talking about flood stuff, it made sense to, to talk about this at the same time. So it is not related to the fact that we're, we're bringing new maps and it was just a good time to bring it up and discuss it all at the same time. So it could be next year, you could wait a year and a half. Um, it, it can be done at, at any time.
Okay, so Randy and then Colette.
Thank you. I just want, and you answered my initial question, Mike, and I just wanted to say thanks. Um, I was just curious if this was. Something that had to be done now or if we could ever come back and take a look at this in the future and I, you just answered that. Thank you. Um, one of the things I wanted to follow up with, um, and this isn't to sway a decision on this particular topic, but just for the rest of those that are hearing this, this meeting. Um, as an insurance agent here though, we do see, just so everyone's clear, um, the ecosystem and Mike, you can, you can probably appreciate this as well as Todd. Um, we work with the homeowners that have had sump pumps or pits in their basement and they've been dry for the last forty or fifty years. And now all of a sudden they're starting to get water in them. So the ecosystem is changing where we're at. Um, my house, I have a sump pump runs every fifteen minutes and it doesn't matter if it's forty below zero outside or if it's a hundred and five outside. It's, it does change and, um, the definition of flood, uh, flood insurance is obviously groundwater. It's, it's not water from a. Overflow toilets. That's not a sump pump. It's not a tiled around your basement, but if it starts to come through the cracks in the foundation. Um, groundwater is the definition of flood insurance. So, um, it's just somewhere, it was one of those things where it is, it is changing. Um, we have those conversations with our insureds all the time. They say, no, don't want it, don't want it. And then they call me up and say, I got three inches of water in the basement. And a lot of it's to do with a lot of the agriculture as we're cutting into these farm fields. Um, during the excavation process, the contractor goes in and cuts into these field tiles. Um, where it had been run out and away, um, has been interrupted now and, and all of a sudden these brand new homes have water in their basement. So. Um, it's just, it's just an educational, uh, thing that I'd just like to share with people. But again, it's not to sway this particular decision, but. Um, we do sit, sit on the offer that we do and it, it is rising. So. Um, kind of, you know, talk to the contractors or digging basements and they can't keep ahead of the water. They got to pump them out. Before they can get the basements framed up and poured before the tile starts filling up with water. So just a little FYI, thank you.
Cool.
Who would have known I'd learned so much about flood insurance tonight? So, um, along the lines of Grant's question or maybe comment, actually. Uh, this idea of waiting until we get an updated map in a couple of years and I recognize we can do this work at any time. Um, and assuming that those numbers of ninety-one will increase in a couple of years. It does it, um, I was trying to think how best to articulate my question. Does it, is, is the workload from your department? Less with ninety-one homes to sort of get the process established? Or would it be similarly if we were to wait for a couple of years and reevaluate and maybe it's, you know, a hundred and fifty homes? Do you see where I'm going with this?
So it, it would be the same whether, no matter how many policies it is. So there's that sunk cost of getting into the program and initiating everything. So. Um, yeah, it doesn't matter if there's five policies or a thousand policies. It's the same amount of work for the city.
Okay, so I, I, I think I'm in the space of holding tight for a couple of years to see what happens with the. With the new map, right? If there are more policies or whatnot based on the information tonight. So, thank you.
Steve?
I'll have to amend my number. I did not, I was, my, when I threw that three thousand number out, I was looking at only a ten percent cost savings for the SFHA, not the non SFHA. So if I add that for the other houses, I come up with a rough potential cost savings to the homeowners of twelve thousand. So, uh, so it's a bigger number, but I think it's still, uh, so once you get going, once you get the, the program established and you're only looking at forty hours. You know, to me, that's, I mean, you're talking about an annual savings all the time and listening to Randy. You know, the potential and maps changing and everything else. I think the number of policies to be written in the future is just going to continue to go up. But, uh, so the cost savings to our citizens may go up as well, but that's kind of where the number is today, but. Uh, you know, I don't, the four hundred hours upfront, I know Clive needed that much. I don't know if we would need that much to get to a level eight, probably not. Is there at a level six? So. You know, and then again, I think they also indicated it took about a year for them to get to that, that first. Point of having the program established. So once you start and say, yes, we're going to do this. It, uh, the guy from Clive was saying, most other people, it takes about a year to get everything documented and presented. So even when we talk about that in the future, whenever you say go, you're still a year away. So if we say today. We're a year away, it'd be in, everything could be in place and then the maps come out in two years. So that's kind of the other aspect to think about. So. I think it's worth leaving on there for Thursday. Everybody give it a little more thought because there's a lot of different pieces here that come into this. Whole puzzle that I think we all need to think about and, um, you know, again, I got a lot more information tonight from all this discussion that, that is helpful as well.
Okay, anyone else with any particular feelings on it? Yes, go ahead.
I apologize, I had to miss part of that conversation, but, uh. Uh, if you do spend the four hundred some hours or whatnot, maybe this was answered. So, um. You, you look to get to an eight or.
Yeah, so we would probably start at, at somewhere around an eight. It wouldn't take four hundred hours there. I don't know how long it would take, but it will take time. And obviously we have a few construction projects going on. This wouldn't be an ideal year to kick that off.
So the goal.
Technically Clive, it's in the planning department, so I can always have Tom do it.
So right off the bat, the goal to go to and to start as an eight?
Yeah, likely just because without doing anything with the, with the ordinance that we already have, because the state of Iowa actually has some regulations. Like you have to have the building one foot above the base flood elevation, stuff like that is actually points. Um, by providing the map online, that's point. So we could use Lynn County GIS to have it out there. So there's, there's small. Areas that we can get points that are fairly easy, but to get from an eight or nine down to the five, that's where a lot of work gets kicked in. And that's where things like the community of, um, damage clause may be a, a way to get more points, things like that, that we'd have to discuss. So the area between that to start really generating those points is where the time consuming part starts. But we could start at that eight or nine level and then, okay, next year we want to target this so we can get to that next level. Um, so it's not something that, you know, where we started an eight, we're stuck at an eight. We can slowly progress and get better.
Okay. Okay, Steve.
Yeah, one more comment to follow up on Will because again, engineering is super busy for twenty twenty-one. So if you were to ask me, uh, do I want to do it now under engineering, I'm going to say, no, you got plenty of other more important projects that need to be a higher priority. But aren't we adding somebody in the staff this year that is going to have background in this area?
So we're hiring an environmental specialist.
Right.
Um, I don't know how much experience they'll have to be able to kick this off. Uh, technically the way that it's written in the ordinance, and again, this can be modified, but it's the city engineer is the floodplain manager is how it is written. In Clive, it's the community development director. So it depends on, on where you're at. And it's going to take us some time to get them on board. So it's July one, that money's available. We still have to do a job description. We have to. Get their wage band, all that stuff. So they won't be on right away.
Yeah, but if it's under engineering for this year, I'd say no. I just, you guys got way too much things. This is not, this is a low priority, lower priority. But if the individuals that we're bringing on, if he, that individual has some background or expertise and who's the other? Going to blank, who's the other gentleman working on flood?
Steve Cooper.
Steve Cooper. You know, if those two individuals can, uh, find a way to do more of this work rather than engineering. Then that might change my opinion of whether to do it now versus later as well. So I don't think engineering has the time to do it in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, Will.
I'll agree with Steve. Uh, maybe I would say remove it from the agenda for now and then maybe. Plan for next year to start and maybe make a plan for your future to, to start it next year and then have a goal of in. It's another year to be do a seven or, you know, kind of work your way up to where you think to that five potentially.
Anyone opposed to that position?
Yeah, because I don't think there's, like Steve said, there's, you don't have time this year.
I think, I think I heard Colette, Steve and Will saying the same thing. Is anyone else, anyone opposed to that? You know, Grant, Renee?
No, I'm, I'm of the, I'm of the camp of the majority as well for the same reasons.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Will, I mean, Grant, sorry.
Well, you know, uh, Chief Kipsmiller is getting rid of bicycle licenses. Maybe he can take this on.
Floodplain manager by chief of police.
Okay, I think we've discussed this one, uh, quite a bit. Uh, there's nothing else that's, uh, pertinent to this. We'll, we'll move on to number six.
So remove E five then for Thursday. All right, E six. Um, so. Staff is looking for direction. Um, so we did the neighborhood last time from, uh, Albernett Road to Tenth and Twenty-Ninth to Thirty-Second. Uh, from two lane, two, uh, sides of parking to one side of parking. Do the fire apparatus not being able to get through? Um, does city council want to go ahead and do that, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood for the rest of the city? Um, or wait and do it as petitions come in a street at a time?
Okay. Any questions on that? Any comments or particular feelings on that?
I do, your honor.
Yeah, go ahead, Renee.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, the way that I judged it, and I think that what we all did was really just riding on, um, safety. And what the fire chief recommended. And so I don't, I personally feel that we should implement this policy in all similar areas just to be consistent. So, um, the fire department and everyone else knows the expectation. I think it's just easier to. You know, I, I think we should just implement it, um, wide city rollout just so that it's consistent and, um, it all follows under the policy of safety.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, I, I echo that position that Renee just stated and I think if we just say commence a series of projects. Uh, to move throughout the city and get, get the no, uh, parking, uh, realigned. Uh, and you know, maybe that takes us a year to do it. Um, that that would, uh, or whatever is, is prudent. I think this will result in a much better condition for the city, uh, relative to safety.
Any other questions for Mike on this one? Yes, Will.
I agree that, uh, go. I agree that uh go neighborhood by neighborhood throughout the city, but I'd also like to say, kind of like with the last thing. I don't anticipate, I wouldn't think you to start that this year, again, with the work plan that Charlie got set in place, so maybe. Again, set up a plan to do so much over the next so many years and and uh.
Yeah, it does take time to get the notifications out and everything.
Start it next year type of thing, or put it in your work plan for next year to to get it rolled out and get it started, be my suggestion.
So the motion for Thursday is directing the staff to implement the no parking regulations for all streets. Um to only one side where they currently allow on both sides. So. My question, Mike, is this will be all streets in the city or only? Only look like like Renee said, similar similar neighborhoods to what we just did, where where the streets are narrow or, I mean. Or is it, is it really gonna be all streets in the city?
So we would have to look at each street by each street. So obviously, depending on the classification, how wide it is. So see, let's just take McGowan, for example. It allows one uh park in one side of it, but it's also wide enough that it's a collector and it's built to have that one lane. So. Some streets are fine the way they are. We wouldn't have to do anything to it, but it would be similar where we would. Select a a part of town, we'd probably do it by the garbage routes. And then we would select that, take a look at it, give a tack report, make notifications to the property owners, have a public comment period.
So it says no parking regulations, it doesn't necessarily mean the same no parking regulations for every street. It's just whatever fits that.
Each each one will have to come to council as a resolution, so you you'll.
But it but it will vary street by street depending on what.
Yes.
What that street.
Yep, each each street will be a its own resolution to approve the no parking.
Okay.
So, yeah, we would do that. We would not do the whole city at once. We would do an area and just like we did last time.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh Lon Pluckon has his hand up.
It's the first time I've gotten to try that. That's kind of fun. I was just going to point out, Mayor, that this is an area that while it would definitely be an impact to the workload of engineering. I would think this is a spot where we would probably want to fold in the fire department as well, because their uh input on the areas that they currently have trouble navigating. Would really be invaluable in prioritizing which neighborhoods we would want to address first. Now, this one was an acute case that came up over this winter, but we know that they've encountered difficulties maneuvering around the community and other areas and. Particularly with the new ladder truck and as the equipment tends to get larger over time, um we'd want their involvement from day one.
So for Thursday, the decision is we're all in favor of doing something or moving this forward. The details of how you do it is gonna be your plan, working with fire department, working with. Staff.
And it'll be, like I said, it'll be similar to how we just did it, where we'll have to notify the property owners, we'll give them a tack report. Um they'll have an opportunity to address city council if they don't want it on that side or don't want it at all.
This is just a direction that it should that we think it should happen, or we'd like we would like.
Cuz staff doesn't want to spend time doing it off council, doesn't want us to.
Okay. Clear for everybody? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so is it fair to say, though, as we look at this from a big picture standpoint? That older neighborhood neighborhoods will probably be impacted first. Because of the narrower streets versus some of the newer neighborhoods.
Yeah, so anything I I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I want to say it's two thousand and seven. So anything that was built in two thousand and seven or newer already has no parking on one side.
Okay.
And that's how all new streets are.
Yeah, when I say older neighborhoods, I'm talking about neighborhoods sixty, seventy, eighty years ago versus, I mean, my neighborhood's thirty years. So it's obviously even before before the two thousand and seven, but even don't don't, aren't the streets narrower and in the. Older part of town, more established part of town.
They vary. I mean, a lot of them are in that that same range of twenty-six to twenty-nine or thirty foot wide.
Renee has another comment? Question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, your hand is up.
Sorry, I'll put it down. I just noticed.
Okay, any further questions on this one? Will?
I was just gonna piggyback off of what Steve said there, that, you know, some of the older neighborhoods, like my neighborhood was built in the fifties and. My streets only parking on one side right now. So at some point. I've been there sixteen, seventeen years now, and it was, it's always been no parking since I lived there. So at some point, it's been done in parts of the neighborhood, the city. Where or why I don't know, but so it's not, it's not like every older neighborhood doesn't have it right now.
As issues brought up, you know, there might have been a group that asked for no parking. Similarly, there was, I think it was Seventh Street already had no parking on one side. Where the others didn't on the section that we just did as well. Um I can tell you right now, there's areas that public service puts out no parking signs, so they can do their garbage routes because people park where they shouldn't park, so.
Okay, so I think we're clear on what the motion is for Thursday, given direction, whether or not to. Just implement the program citywide. Okay, E seven.
All right, so E seven is to submit another traffic safety improvement program for the intersection of Highway one hundred and East Post Road. Um we did this last year. We did the the TEEP study that came and H R Green came and gave a presentation on it. Um we did apply. Um I believe it was due like the day of the derecho. We still got it churned in. Um but they had quite a few applicants this past year. Um so we're just recommending that we apply again, since it was a need out there, and if they're willing to pay for half million dollars, we'll take it.
Questions? Are clear for everybody? Okay, E eight.
So E eight is a change order with Pipe Pro for the library building project. I'm not sure if anybody from the library is on.
Yes, this is Kelly from the library. Um we actually have Sean Kelly from Ingberg Anderson, um our architect on the project. Who is here to speak to a couple of other items, and so I'm gonna cheat and let him speak to this change order while he is on. Sean, can you hear us?
Yeah, sorry, he's having some technical difficulty. I'm uh, all right, I'm on. It worked. Okay, uh, good evening. Uh there, the current change order that is in front of you for the Marion Public Library is uh during the supplemental review process. We noted some plumbing, it's really just plumbing issues with the uh design, and we issued changes to. Bush Construction and they came back with a um the the current change order. This is a. Several minor things such as getting sinks correct, undermounted, top mounted. Uh the big change on here was there's a couple of sinks that weren't coordinated properly in the restrooms and lavatories. So we corrected those items and sent the uh basically a. Pretty significant change over to them for I for the plumbing. It's not really any HVAC, I don't believe. It's all plumbing.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, thank you. Moving on to E nine.
Yeah, so E nine is change order number nine with CCI regarding the fire station project. Um there's a breakdown in your packet, but it was. Regarding some soil that had to be remediated, um some gas lines that were removed, um fire dampers and generator fuel. Um an amount of almost forty-one thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions on that? E ten.
So E ten is the master short form agreement with HDR. Um so HDR um currently has. Task order number one for the airport services. The short form has not been approved yet by council. Um so that's like the base document that then the task order works off of, and since there's no master form, the task order that was approved. Needs that master form, so we're trying to clean it up. It'll also include eventually another task order for the sanitary sewer model work. So for example. A project like where the old Y was to make sure that that flow works for the future, so and that policy will come back to city council. For approval, and then we can do those task orders as they come in. Um so we need to just have the master short form agreement approved.
Any questions? All right, uh E eleven, I will turn over to Mayor Protem.
So E eleven is an application to the Iowa Department of Transportation regarding the Marion Airport. Um it is for two projects. One of them is burying the overhead alliance power lines that are along one fifty-one for the approach seventeen. And the other one is the installation of precision approach path indicator lights. Um so they basically, depending on what altitude and angle you're at, give different lights to. Tell the pilots either you're too high or too low as they're coming into the the runway. So they're both safety improvements um that were top on the list. That are eligible for DOT funding applications.
Any questions, discussion? Grant?
Yes, uh I I just want to put emphasis on the fact that these are safety related. Um and the precision approach path indicator is utilized when you have. Uh visual flight rules in place, in other words, uh during generally good weather, but it really does allow. Pilots to uh come approach the runway and do so in a proper uh uh flight path. Uh so that they don't have problems making last minute adjustments prior to landing.
Hey, anybody else? All right, back to the mayor.
Okay, community development, I think Tom is competing with him, I guess, only. He's got everything marked but two items, so.
Um the next item, Your Honor, is related to uh final plat of Barnes first addition. So this would be a Barnes manufacturing site. Uh west of thirty-first, north of Fifth Avenue. Um there were a number of parcels associated with the original Barnes property and. As you can see the from the aerial there, Mr. Barnes owned the entire uh area within and and so as he's. Kind of reduced his footprint there and sold some properties, uh he's final plating it for those sales, and this will make things a lot easier, clean up some old parcels. And get everything in line appropriately. There's been a lot of. Uh background conversation on this, just so you're aware, is one of the reasons we did a plat sewer water lines easements and such like that are all. Incorporated into the into the plat and. All departments have been coordinated within this for review, and we are recommending approval.
Will?
What? So all departments coordinated in this, you said? So water department also?
Yeah, I think he watches it daily.
Okay, cuz I'm just curious, cuz I know there was some issues, I don't know if it was issues, but discussion in the past about potential. Boundary disputes or whatnot along there, but from the water department and uh and Barnes, because it, cuz if you're doing three, is it three? Parcels, cuz just looking at the map, it's a little section right above the. Water to the north of the water tower itself. There's, it's inside your red box, but it looks like it's part of the water department's parcel. Cuz I, that's what I've heard of in the past of their potentially was. Shouldn't say dispute, but I don't know what other word to use.
No, there's a, there's a property line, the where the property hit the old alley, there you can kind of see on the.
But that's the old alley still.
It's the alley north, that's north of that red line is the alley.
And so that's been vacated, and there's an easement gonna be established within the flat.
Okay.
So, yep.
Yeah, it just looks like, uh because the the water tower. The base of the water tower is probably is, I'm sure is within the boundary line, but it hangs over.
Yeah.
So looking at it from the air, it looks like it's approaching there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other, was that clear, Will, or is that?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that there was no issues with water department and the the property there. Again, it's just things I'd heard in the past.
I would assume if there was an issue, Todd would be here.
Yes.
Explaining it to us. Okay, any other questions? F four.
Um F four, uh. Uh the applicant is uh asked to remove this from the agenda, so we won't. We don't need to discuss that.
Okay, F five.
And F five, uh this is the project I spoke of at the last city council meeting and just kind of gave the council a briefing that we were. Uh be working with RDG, planning and design to complete the uh East Marion Subarea Plan. Um related to the annexation area and some uh kind of use them as a uh to coordinate the efforts. Um and get all the property owners kind of on board on how we uh see that area come together and then also um do a, so there'll be a. A detailed land use plan on the on some property, um essentially between one fifty-one and Infernal Road. And then we'll extend that general land use planning out to the extension of Henman Road north, so we can kind of get a. Good idea and have some guidance as that area develops into the future um on what's going on. So this will be an amendment to the comp plan ultimately. And so we just had our first kind of kickoff meeting today to talk about a rollout of this and. Upon approval, we'll we'll start down the road of of getting the group involved, all the groups involved. So this is the same developer that's been doing. Uh the Rookwood, Rookwood Development LLC or Chad Pelley and his group. Um so they're anticipating. That development I showed you earlier, moving pretty quickly, and they're gonna move into this next uh next area, so. This will just help accommodate that. We've also got some potential conflicts with the airport and the overlay zones. There's a lot of details that are going into this. Be nice to have a land planning group that can kind of assist with that.
Is there a preliminary vision for what this would develop?
So um the developer submitted a couple of different concepts for it. Um because we have school district, groundwater, uh the water department. It's city property, but it's targeted for the water department, and then there's some parks uh property as well. So we're trying to. Take all of those pieces, work them into a development proposal that will likely come out of this. Small swaps of property, once the development plan is is kind of in place. Maybe not, but that's that's kind of the idea is how can we best serve all the players that are sitting at the table to best benefit the community as we move forward with. Seeing a preliminary plat and development of this of the site. So there's quite a few different constraints. We got a regional detention basin, uh sewer service ability is is required to come under one fifty-one. Yeah, we have the airport overlay zone and approach zone and some restrictions on land uses associated with that. So there's quite a few. Items to juggle as it relates to this particular site.
Hey, questions? All right, next item. Oh, so I'm sorry, go ahead, Will.
Um not necessarily a question, but uh maybe a suggestion for the scope of work. Uh kind of what I brought up earlier with when Mike talked about an underpass under thirteen, or maybe. Have some type of plan for trail and underpass under one fifty-one to connect all the new residential up in there. Down to the Grantwood Trail, so that's got connection into the trail system. So if that's something that could be. Planned out in the scope of work of what they want, what's wanted to be seen up there.
I mean, I.
Good idea.
Thanks.
I just uh quickly, sorry, um similar to what Mike was talking about, the the task order one or the HDR's umbrella agreement. We haven't, we have a current agreement with RDG that we've used for the the neighborhood plan. Um and such, so we're, that's why the contract, there's not a contract, and we're just gonna use that as the. So we use the scope of work, there'll be a task order assignment, and then we'll use the standard contract that we have in place to kind of cover that. So. I know nobody really likes that AI contract. So we've already went through it once, we'll just leave it alone and and move on.
Any further questions on E F five? Okay, now, next item on the library. Is that it, Tom?
Yep.
Okay, under library. Okay, under library, item G1.
Yes, this is, uh, me again, it's Sean. Hello, everyone. Again, the library is continuing to send out, all right, to get proposals and send out bidding for furniture. This is the next round which went for shelving. We do have two additional packages out for proposal right now. So hopefully I'll see you again next month. The shelving itself, we went for government contract through the state of Iowa. We petitioned two different shelving manufacturers for proposals. The lowest one was from Biblo and it came in significantly under our estimated budget in the, I did a two-page write-up that tried to summarize all of the costs so far for the furniture to the library and right now we are about $40,000 under budget for the first five bid or packages with two to go. So.
Always good to be under budget. Any questions on this item? Okay, G2, mobile library.
Yes, thank you. This is Kelly from the library. You may remember that we have brought this to council before, back in May, I believe, was when we originally had approval to begin the project. This, just as a reminder to those who are tuning in, this goes all the way back to a needs assessment that we had done in 2016 that said with the growth of Marion, the recommendation for the size of the library was around 65,000 square feet. In our plans to build the new building, what we had all collectively decided on was to build the new building at 50,000 square feet and then add a mobile library branch because we thought this offered much more flexibility as Marion continues to grow. So then last May, we brought this project to council and were given approval to start moving forward. We did begin to work with a vendor and plan what we would like the mobile library to look like and to include. And so we've included some photos of possibilities. That's generally the size of vehicle we are looking at. And we're working with Summit Body Works to get this work going. We would like to sign the contract. They require a 50% down payment, which we have. All of the money for this part of the project will come from fundraising efforts. We currently have six, around 65% raised with requests out for grants and donations for the rest of the project, but would like to go ahead and get this kicked off and get that, get, so they can start the work on this.
Hey, questions for Kelly? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, Kelly, just a question. So I think maybe you answered part of it, but you said you raised 65% or the goal for purchasing the mobile library?
Yes.
So is this a separate fundraising effort compared to the numbers that we've seen before for the building goal?
Yes, this is a, this is a separate fundraising effort and we have separate grants out for this part of the project.
Okay.
It does take about a year to, from the point of kind of beginning, which is what we're asking for today to go ahead and begin the project until they have the vehicle completed, which is why we wanted to hopefully get this started so that it's done around the same time as the new building and we can also use this for some advertising and start to bring programs out to individuals.
So I'm just curious, does this, does this require someone with special training to drive it? I mean, like, how does that work?
No, this does not require a special license for this vehicle and that was one of the reasons that we went with this size of vehicle because there isn't an additional license or trainee needed.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Kelly, this is Randy. Can you tell me the, I understand the truck would have a warranty on its chassis, but the vehicle itself then, can you just tell us briefly, is this a line item budget within the library's financial responsibility then for the service and maintenance of this vehicle going forward?
Yes, that would be added in, correct. We do have, I believe it's, there's a two-year that we wouldn't have to worry about any maintenance, but then we have gotten estimates on what that would cost to add to our operational budget going forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Yes, yeah, great. Kelly, Grant here. I just noticed in the purchase agreement, there's a couple of citations that have been highlighted about the Summit Body Works won't be responsible for any delays due to the chassis and body manufacturers. And I presume if everybody has been listening to the periodic reports in news media, there's a severe integrated circuit chip shortfall and that's hitting all auto manufacturers. And so dependent upon how long that might last could have negative impact on getting this completed.
Yes. Unfortunately, it seems like with COVID and the derecho, we are hearing that about many different things when it comes to both building and the the vehicle that either prices will be rising or there's a delay in parts. We have talked with Summit Body Works and of course there's no guarantees, right, about how long or how long that would be delayed or if how much it would impact this project, but we have talked through that, so. But, but it's always good to be aware of that. So thank you, Grant.
Hey, any other questions for Kelly on this item? So the resolution on Thursday will be to approve the purchase. Okay, any other questions or issues? Okay, thank you, Kelly. You have one more item, G3.
Hello, uh, one more thing here that, what you're seeing here on the G3 resolution for the library furniture is what I brought to you last time. This is the three agreements that you've already approved, added together and we drafted a contract and this is really just to approve the contract, not the bid amounts, that which was already approved last time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any questions on this? Okay, looks like everyone's good on that one. Thank you very much, Sean. Moving on to other department discussions, we have the fiscal year 21 strategic plan quarterly update. Lon?
Good evening, your honor and fellow members. Yes. And I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to come up behind that. And if it helps at all too, I could share my screen if that's, if that eases the process.
Yeah, do you want to do that, Zach?
Okay, we'll do. Okay, I think it's up and ready to go. Actually, let me do one other thing before I start going. Let me put the screen share where I can see people again. Okay, great. Well, it's great to be before everyone today and to have the opportunity to present on the third quarter update of the strategic plan. The last time we came before city council, we were discussing the adoption of the strategic plan and talking about the process that would be moving forward with in the implementation stage. We're currently moving through the implementation stage and I'll have a couple of slides talking about that today. But we're excited to discuss the various stages we've gotten into with the plan and with that, let's get started. Lon gave a really great overview of the strategic plan. You can find it on the very back page of the strategic plan. And one of the areas I wanted to call out is the sentence you put together, and the city is committed, committed to realizing these goals and will continue to align our work plans, capital investments and daily activities to achieve them in talking about this North Star Plan for the city. Why I think it's important to highlight this is the idea that this, the, the structure we're moving through itself really follows that first, we have to set forth a strategy. So with that, it's in this last year, because we've really been moving through the restructuring piece of aligning, what does it look like for each department to align themselves to the plan that's been put forth by city council and that we're moving through as an organization is to ensure that we're realigning appropriately in, in the pursuit of that plan going forward. And also revising, revisiting one of the slides that city council may remember of the strategic plan, vision, action. It just gives an overview of the structure that we're using, put forth by our strategic planning consultant. City council themselves put forth the five focus areas, a set 15 goals for the city to work under. Objectives were outlined underneath each of those goals or subgoals and then staff came together developing the strategies and then the key performance indicators there under. After which, plan implementation, and this is really where we're at right now, was the next stage in how do departments now align their work plans in order to move through that. There's two elements I want to talk about today that continue to help us move forward in this plan process. One is the department work plans and then secondly, are the quarterly updates, which we're going to jump into very shortly. The work plans themselves, and this gives a little snippet of what departments see at the individual level. There's a total of fifteen, as I mentioned previously, 15 separate goals that then get unpacked into 41 discrete strategies, or I should say discreet and integrated strategies in order to move forward the strategic plan. And then underneath theirs, there's a set of milestones. Each department has then created subactions that are utilized at the department level as well as the management level to to keep tabs on how well we're progressing towards each of these strategies. The, the structure set forth is that each of these strategies have a, have a certain, they're time bound, so there's certain specific target days when we expect to move those forward in order to roll up to each of the goal levels. And the one you're seeing here, we'll talk about shortly how well engineering or the organization itself is moving towards the PCI assessment and working towards improved infrastructure in the city. The other area I wanted to mention is, is by looking at it at the individual milestone level, we have, there's about 160 milestones we're looking at individually right now. It allows for us to cross departmentally, see how, see how as we're advancing through these individual milestones, if we get behind in one or ahead of one, how there may be interdependencies and how that may impact one or another. So it's really been helpful as, as we're starting really at the beginning stages now of monitoring the plan at those individual milestone levels so that we can keep rolling up each level that plan so that city council can see how we're moving forward at the goal level. And bringing us to the quarterly updates, which is today what we're looking at. Before we jump into the city council side of that, one other thing I wanted to mention is this is prior to the, the city council updates on a quarterly basis, staff gets together as well and discusses how well they're progressing along each of those individual milestones. So there can be discussion to understand what's going on with the plan at the most granular level, look for opportunities for improvement. So as we're looking to move towards the goal updates to city council and strategy level updates, we can make sure that we're improving each quarter we come together so that we can try to keep on, on target with those, with those timelines we have for the strategic plan. Power BI is a tool that we've started to utilize. It's, it's, it's been a, so far it's, it's worked well in us being able to monitor the plan at a milestone level. And today I'll be showing city council through a Power BI view of the plan of where the different, where the status is for each of the strategies that we have set, set before today for, for review. So far, so good with being able to see the screen? Yeah, okay. So what we're looking at here is in the upper left-hand corner of the different focus areas, the five focus areas we have set forth. Then there's a table put together which has an overview of the goal, the strategy description, and then the update that we'll be discussing today. There's about 11 different updates that we'll be going over. One link to each individual strategy. Mind you, there's 41 strategies, so we're not going to, one, we, the intent of the quarterly updates isn't to update on each individual strategy, but more so is be able to speak to the goal because ultimately that's what we want to move ahead. What is the, what is the goal that we're trying to accomplish and how, how, how we made progress on the strategy with the expectation of attaining this, of moving forward in that strategy will be able to increase attainment of that goal measure. One of the other things I wanted to mention and I'll mention a little bit in the next slide as well, is initially when we developed our timeline for the strategic plan, we had hoped early on to have all, all of the KPIs or the key performance indicators developed at this stage. We found out about eight to 10 months ago that that was going to be overly ambitious, especially moving into a new, a new strategic plan management model. So with that, the expect, or the hope, or the goal is, is by the end of this first year in 2021, we'll be developing our KPI measures as a baseline set that we can then look to as we continue to move forward in the plan. So to limit where we're looking a little bit, let me just look at vibrant communities, the first focus area. And the first focus area has make uptown a regional culture entertainment destination for residents and visitors with a strategy of complete, complete studies and design work which enhance experience for residents and visitors to uptown Marion. The one update we have in this area is the city council adopted the uptown plan, which is a significant milestone. City councils is aware of the work that's been done through the uptown planning stages and then what that's going to be setting the foreground for in uptown. But that was one of the major milestones that we had in order to make sure that we'll, we'll continue on track with this project. I should also mention that many of, one of the things you'll find is in reflecting on this plan is the city of Marion, in my opinion, does a pretty good job of keeping city council apprised of the different projects we're working through. So many of the projects we'll be talking about today in the status won't be the first time we're, we have heard them come before city council, but more so today is just a review of these are the stages that we're moving forward with in order to stand track for each of these goal measures that we have set forth. The next one we have in here is expand recreational opportu, sorry. Expand recreational opportunities in the community. And the strategy there was the part, is the partnerships with different organizations, either new partnerships or existing partnerships. Seth, in addition to having two twins coming along, has also done a great job in, in strengthening that partnership with YMCA and starting the programming. So the city Marion is currently providing programming in the new YMCA and they're working towards final, finalizing the MOU of how that's going to look forward in this next year. Similarly, MLUs are currently underway for the use of Prospect Meadows as well as some of our other current partners such as Linmar and some of the, and Marion School District. Parks and Recreation are also looking at new programs and partnerships, how they can expand programming. One of the, one of the figures that Seth recently provided is they've already enrolled, I think it's 1,168 participants for the spring and summer programs offerings that they have set up with a waitlist of 270 individuals. So 24 of the program offerings that they have are already maxed out. So they're looking for creative ways in order to leverage these partnerships to make sure they meet the, meet the current demand for recreational offerings in the city. Similarly, looking at the same goal once again, but a different strategy of expanding Similarly, looking at the same goal once again, but a different strategy of expanding the recreational opportunities in the community. The strategy is. A little wordy, but I'll say it all, all the same. Utilize evaluation information on the current aquatic operations, resident demand for recreational activities in park infrastructure passive play opportunities. To develop a recreational growth strategy for the community. To the, to the updates that we have in that area is one, the aquatic study is halfway complete. That came before council number of months back, starting that study and. There at the halfway mark with that study. And then secondly, the Creekside Pride consultant has been selected for that study moving forward. There's been some initial steps, I think, in some of the prairie passive play opportunities that we expect to have some updating in the next quarter. On that. But overall recreation has. Been called upon pretty frequently in the last couple of months with residents excited about new program offerings for this next year. So jumping into the next focus area of efficient effective government. Actually, the time was perfect because there was a. A good conversation about the role of the investment committee and actually through the quarter three update. This ended in March, we currently didn't have the finalized investment policy that what the city council say for discussion. I can't stress enough, especially from the budgetary perspective of, of some of the potential gains long term from that as our. Interest revenue this last year, looking the difference from the budget, I think of twenty-two to twenty-one was. Almost six hundred thousand dollar declining interest revenue. So we are looking forward to some regain rebounds in that. In the coming years, if we manage our money more actively in that space. The second area wanted to call attention to is under the area of having a five-year financial plan. And that includes capital plan improvements and associated. Let me expand this out. Operational costs in there that really looks at two, two areas. One is making sure we have a financial, five-year financial plan in place to inform. The financial decisions we're making the city and then it's also for longer term goals, similar to the investment strategy. Of how do we then review and revise our financial policies to make sure that they align in position as well as we move forward in the city? So that will be the five-year financial, five-year financial plan was to be completed in FY twenty-one. With the financial policies being aimed for completion in twenty twenty-three, so that will be coming in this next year, there'll be. More updates to city council and how that plan's going to emerge. Under economic development. The first, the goal in there to boost the local economy and promote tourism opportunities in Marion. In the update in that area and, and the reason why there's some of these areas will be thinner than the other ones. Should mention here's, you'll see the bars charts that there's nothing that ends in twenty-two. So what that means is a number of these are actually. Not set for completion till the end of twenty-three, but we did want to update city council on one, the completion of the uptown plan was one of the major milestones. In that area that is a shared. Dependency with vibrant communities. And then secondly, as council is very aware of the construction project. Which preceded this presentation today continues to move forward and that's. As being an anchor tenant in uptown is expected to promote the tourism opportunities as well as move forward. The goal of overall vibrancy in, in uptown Marion. Under sustain, sustainable infrastructure. I want to say it was about. Four meetings back, there was. Jake gave a great presentation on the PCI data for the city and just as an updated city council in order to move forward. The. The streets infrastructure side of it, the PCI date was collected in the streets, city council raided the streets, did the right alongs. Better to do a lot right along with them than the police. And then develop the target PCI rating for the streets is currently underway. So I believe this is kind of a, this will be a shared decision between city council. And engineering to try to determine what is that, what's a target threshold that we want to set forth for the city. On the sewer side, similarly, there was a study that was put forth before council that. Talked about the, I think it was the forty-three million dollar price tag for sanitary sewer infrastructure over the. The coming twenty, I believe it was a twenty, twenty to forty year horizon. So that's the first step in that plan. There'll be steps coming forward in the next couple of quarters, giving updates on the, on the recommendations of how do we move that through in the city. Last, but certainly not least is safe communities and safe communities actually has three different levels we're going to talk about today. That have been very active as of late. The first area and the goal is the development, the optimal staffing model to provide accept. Expected level of responsiveness by police, fire and emergency communications. The most significant strategy to move that forward is really looking at the use of the data analytics and how that information is used to inform. The management decisions and, and or. Review that information to make sure that they're deploying resource, resources appropriately in the organization. They're currently working on the needs assessment for the. For the new public safety information, information management system. They've had various meetings on that and. So much so that council supported the three hundred thousand dollars being set aside in the FY twenty-two budget. In order to move that project forward so that, just a reminder of city council that is currently in the budget for FY twenty-two. Under the same goal, but a different strategy, which I think. Bear with me one minute. Partner with the community to, to identify and address barriers to feeling safe in Marion. The city council has been updated on most recently is or. About six months ago that the mental health liaisons began their work in the city, I believe in January of twenty twenty-one. This new service provision gives. Police Department up. In their interventions with the public, another option of rather than detention of, of how to deescalate certain commerce. Or certain encounters with the public and so forth. As Chief Kitzmiller has mentioned, they've been very successful in utilizing that strategy with the public as well as. Engaging staff and talking through different strategies for police services. And sorry, community is a layover from. I left that in from beforehand. And then the second piece or the last piece in there is under the same goal, but a different strategy once again is engage the community. To identify and address barriers to inclusiveness. And this is centered around the community equity task force that. Has been underway. I'm not sure the, the exact starting of that date, but we have the mayor's on, mayor is on that task force as well as. As, as well as Colette, as well as, as, as lawn on that task force. But they've completed the equity survey in Marion as well as started moving forward with the beginning stages of. Developing sets of recommendations that they're looking to move forward in city council in the coming quarters. But with that, those are the eleven separate updates on. On the strategy level that we wanted to put before city council and to see, one, if there's any questions on these. Actually, I guess before opening it to questions, let me just review one more slide if I could. Lastly, I have a near a strat, a slide called strategic management process. And reflecting upon the process and really in talking with our strategic planning consultant, one of the things that she was continuing to mention is. Is that the importance of the, of the cadence or the, or the speed which you go through strategic planning. She mentioned, you know, Zach, as you're moving forward through this, as you share with other organizations, she said. I've worked with organizations have been that are been doing strategic planning for about five or six years, but they're having to. Kind of rebase and start over again because they're finding that they're really missed some of the fundamentals and making sure that they. That they care for the initiatives in their strategic plan throughout all the layers of the organization. And it reminded me of this African proverb I like returning to at times. I have to remind myself at times. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. So the idea that. As we're moving forward through the strategic planning process, it really is a, an opportunity for us as an organization. To build all layers of the implementation straight strategies, but also making sure that. Everyone understands what are we moving towards that idea that the structure should follow the strategy. So let's make sure everyone understands the strategy. And then together as a team, let's restructure around that for the benefit of the community. With the focus in, in year two is really developing that measurement and evaluation side, which will strengthen us. As we move into performance measures and understanding more about performance management and then in year three. Calibrating through that as we look to finalize the third year of the plan. So with that, love to take any questions and. Once again, I appreciate all city council's support and continued engagement with the strategic plan.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions on Zach's presentation? Yes, Steve.
Yeah, Zach, Steve here. What is the accessibility for anybody to look at the strategic planning initiatives? And get looking at the update on it?
Great question. With the, let me bring back up. There we go. Are you referring to the, the one up right now, Steve?
Yeah. So how, I mean, can any, is there a place where. City council or citizens can take a look at that. I think it's a good refresher for people to look at it and see, kind of see what the. Totality of the strategic plan is, what the initiatives are, and then the status of the initiative. So. I mean, there's a great deal of information in there that to be good to kind of look at it once in a while, just to see. All that is in that strategic plan and what all the, the steps are, because a lot of times we don't get a refresher on it. So is that accessible online somewhere for us or for citizens?
That was one of the, that was one of the areas I wanted to discuss with, with city council today to under, to, to hear how well. Presenting it in this manner worked the first time around and, and where I'm saying that, I, I guess I should call it the first iteration. Because as we develop the strategic plan, one of the areas that we're looking to layer in which power BI will help us immensely is the, is the measurement side. Right now, as we're still developing that, we don't have the linkages there yet, but we're trying to build on the ground floor from power BI into that. So this could be set up on the city council view that you're seeing here, where it could be open to city council as well as. It could be put on a public. URL, so it could be accessed by anybody.
Yes, yeah, Zach Grant here, just on that particular. Point of availability to council or future availability to our, our constituency. One of the things that I would. Just ask that you consider is, is the timing that you. You know, hit those milestones and because I, if this is the sort of the front end initial utilization. Of this business intelligence suite, I'm sure you're going to have over the next month or two. Have realizations of adjustments and. Changes in the level of detail that you're, that, that you're presenting. And so. I guess what I just, what I'm suggesting is, is, you know, certainly make it available to council as soon as is achievable. But don't overdrive your headlights and, you know, have a bunch of things that you want to retrofit into it. After that date, I think, take a little time, think about it holistically and deploy it when you are. Most ready to do that, but I would say if, if that's six months out, that might not be satisfying. To all of us in this room. But I certainly a version of this publicly viewable is going to be exceptionally important. Because it will help tie in the public's eye and mind, you know. All of the issues that we wrestle with month in and month out relative to what the city is doing. So. I guess that's maybe a long way of getting to what I think is important is to say congratulations for working on this kind of depiction.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Grant. And, and discussing the next milestone before city council would be in August. Would be coming back before city council providing a. It's amazing to say we're already talking at the year end piece for the first year of the strategic plan. But packaging that together and really trying to interlay some of that data in there. So following that great advice you're giving. I will definitely look to wait to see how we can either enter. Overlay the data with the plan or have something more of a flat file. For example, this is interactive. However, it doesn't interlay the data yet. So at a minimum, we could develop a, an update that is at a similar level to city council to make sure that they're. The same information we're giving the city councils available to the public at that higher level. But as you mentioned, we don't. Overly extend ourselves in a, in a system that we either can't keep up over time or doesn't provide the best information to the public. So. So thank you for the comment.
Anything else for Zach? Zach, I want to thank you for all your hard work on this too and everyone else involved. I, you know, I know I say this all the time, but. I continue to just feel so happy about the direction that we're headed in terms of. You know, having this roadmap and, and being more professional and how we do everything and, and more methodical and. You know, it not only is good for us internally, but it's good for the, the public. And it bolsters their confidence in, in the, in the city team and, and that we're. Doing things in a way that makes sense and that it's, that is explainable and based in real. Facts and information and then we have a, a plan and a roadmap. It just, it just helps increase the confidence. And credibility that, that the, the public gives our, our city organization. So. Thank you for all your hard work on this. Okay, we will move on to. Number two. Stump removals.
Good evening, your honor and council. I'm going to let our city arborist, Mike Semperich. Kind of lay out the situation with the stumps out in the city. Before we do so, we're, what we're going to be discussing here is an item that is currently not budgeted. For our plan, but we do have a staff recommendation to try to move forward with, with stump removals. And so we do want to have that discussion and have direction from city council since this is a budget item. We do feel that we can find funding resources to pay for items such as this in a shorter timeframe. But I'll let Mike Semperich kind of lay out the, the, the details of, of the stop. So, all right, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Seth. Hi, Mike.
Good evening, everybody. On the first slide there, I just have a few pictures as we work through this couple of slides here. To show what some of the imagery is that we're still seeing out there in the right of way as of today. To give a little better depiction of what we're dealing with when we talk about stumps, some of them are flush cut low to the ground. Depending on how or what type of failure the tree sustained, there's a different variety of stumps out there. Than just that standard flush cut. Variety you see on the left side there. So next slide, please. Following our final veric, verification inventory assessment that we did or we completed this spring. We stopped last winter just because of snow cover preventing us from doing a more accurate job of verifying those stumps. We ended up with about fifteen hundred in the public right of way. That's actually. A fairly less number than what we anticipated in my presentation a few months ago. Some of the reason behind that is because percentage of those stumps are also public stumps are located in parks. And so we've removed that number from this final number because we're addressing those stumps in-house with staff and city equipment. Some of the other things that play into that decreased number is the fact that if a tree was windblown and uprooted. And had more fifty percent or more of its root mass exposed, those stumps did qualify under the FEMA. Debris collection and reimbursement process. So some of those stumps were addressed through steps we've already taken. To manage that debris and tree removals. So a majority of the stumps that we have in the right of way. I estimate about sixty percent or more are twenty-four inches or greater in diameter. So the majority of stumps throughout the community inventory were larger, more mature trees that we had in those right away spaces. And so we are talking about a larger scale of stump in general in that overall number. And then there has been a general public preference or just a reasonable income of concerns. Regarding questions as to whether how, how soon, what process, how quickly we can manage. And where the end of the light is in the tunnel for getting through the remainder of these tree removals. Which essentially is just the stump removal and turf or right away restoration. Next slide, please.
And I've been getting those questions on social media, so.
Yeah, they're, they're everywhere. We started getting them. Yeah, they're they're everywhere. We started getting them last fall. We are allowing residents at their preference to acquire a right of way permit and complete a stump removal on their own. The cost is the owner's responsibility. And at this point in time, we haven't had a real serious discussion about reimbursement. It hasn't been a very large number of people that have done it. What it allows is for a private owner to remove a stump in front of their property, more so on their timeline. We can certainly do it more cost efficiently at a mass or a bulk rate with a contract with a contract. But certain people wanted to get those things out of the way right away, one to help replant and two, just because they're not really aesthetically pleasing in the right away. And so some people were more concerned about getting things addressed sooner. My staff recommendation would be to open up a request for proposals to do stump removal, including restoration of the grade or the soil grade in the in the right of way and including turf or reseeding restoration. What we'd like to do is seek a contract with a preference to select a vendor based on timeliness. I've spoken with some people, I've had a few contractors reaching out to me just to see how we're going to address this concern. And with a little bit of conversation with people that have shown interest, I've already gotten the inclination that there are some either general contractors or companies that are going to combine forces out there that are looking to be able to accomplish this type of removal of that total fifteen hundred stumps in somewhere around one to two seasons. And so we're looking to get it done in a timely manner if possible. I also mentioned the ability to accomplish additional items. I'll run through those here in the next slide, but there's a little more than just stump removal. There's the cleanup. There's the turf restoration, the the grade restoration, a lot of things that play into that. And every stump is different. It's kind of a case by case scenario. Some stumps have higher surface roots. Some stumps have roots that run out ten to fifteen foot away from the actual center point of the stump that still need to be addressed at an above ground level. And so it's not necessarily just a, you know, a two to three foot radius hole that's ground out and we call it done. There is some additional work or things to go into greater detail with a scope of a contract on to make sure that we accomplish what we want to achieve through this removal process. Preferred timeline, as I mentioned, would be less than two seasons. And so we're hoping that we can achieve that as well. The additional items that I mentioned was cleanup of the stump material. Sometimes this isn't included in the actual removal process. Removal is strictly just grinding the stump. And so cleanup can be an additional cost backfilling. There's a requirement for soil to be backfilled in many of these circumstances. So there's additional costs possibly related to backfilling and then also turf restoration and seeding. We can utilize some sort of seed mix that's been approved for other projects in the past and use that in our scope. And then lastly, I think, or I would prefer to have an inspection process either by myself or another city official to go out and look at some of these as they come across a completion status, just because a lot of times in the mix of things, there's things that can get missed. There's surface roots that I mentioned earlier. Every case is a case by case scenario. And so it's not just a one and done or a real general straight line across it all. It's all a little different. Next slide, please. For cost estimates for that fifteen hundred stumps, I'm using the same twenty four inch diameter average with a four dollar diameter inch cost that I've spoke of before with that reduced number of fifteen hundred stumps, it comes out to about a hundred and forty four thousand. And then again, there'll be those additional costs related to cleanup, fill dirt, grading and seeding, which we're estimating to come out to about a total of two thousand or I'm sorry, two hundred thousand dollars. And then there's another stump picture on the right, just to give some more imagery or perspective. Some of these trees were cut differently by one contractor to the next or one crew under the contractor to the next. And so there's really no good reason why this stump's still standing five foot tall in the right of way, but it is. Next slide, please. What we're looking for ultimately is some direction for staff to pursue that RFP. And through that process, select a vendor, develop a contract and work towards the the removal of the right away stumps in the total of fifteen hundred over the next two seasons.
So are you planning to have an item on the on the agenda for Thursday to to direct staff? Or
That one, right?
Put an item to direct staff or do we, can we look for a direction at this meeting? Okay, we can put something on to direct staff to solicit for an RFP, you know, and as he alluded to, you know, we're we're trying to get this done in a sooner timeline. If we were to do this completely in the house, there's there's more trees or more tree stumps than there were ash trees. And so we were doing a five year plan for ash tree removal. So you can just imagine how how many years it would take us just to do this out of our general budget and our annual work program. We're we're talking many, many years. So for morale and and also for to push initiatives for replanting in the right away and to move on from Durachio. This is something that staff feels that needs to get done sooner than later.
But given that it's not budgeted, where where will the money come from?
So there's a couple of options in in discussing with Juan in a mall, you know, we can, we can do either plan bond dollars or debt services and utilize either urban forestry to pay it over time for a longer period of time, or you can replace it with American Rescue Plan cash. I hope I said that right on.
You did fine.
Okay, so American Rescue Plan cash?
Yes. Yeah. So so we do have avenues that we can, we can afford this over over the next couple of years. But again, this isn't something that we obviously put into the CIP. We didn't know a Durachio was going to come in August.
Okay, so if if a homeowner decides to remove that stump on their own, do they have to coordinate with you or they can just do it?
We're we're currently requesting them to fulfill a right away permit. There's no cost related to that, but it does create a record on our on our end so we can track where they've been done and who did it.
And the restoration work that's there, that'll be their job too, or okay, if they remove this up, they have to do the restoration. Just one last question for me, then we'll see what everybody else has, but where where the tree took up the sidewalk with it? What's is that a different process then or?
You know, we're gonna, we're gonna evaluate those differently. You know, we 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 called out in our inspection process twenty two sidewalks that were stumps that were lifted lifted up the sidewalk. Obviously, the stumps need to be come out first before we address the sidewalk. So we're going to be meeting to talk about that here, hopefully in the next week or two, to see if that's something that we could fit within our scope or we need to contract out.
I would think that's more that's priority kind of, you know, if you're trying to prioritize the two, the two projects, because you know, the the sidewalk's gone and that, you know, so that to me that would be
And and we absolutely agree, you know, we can, we can technically do some of those stumps under our current current contract that we have with Freedom or even do it in house. So those are discussions we we still need to have. But you know, when we talk about a RP in a in an overall contract for the rest of the stumps, you know, this is something that's going to take, you know, a full season or two seasons to address. So obviously, the the sidewalk stump discussion should happen sooner and that is a higher priority on our on our list.
Okay, I'll open it up. Anybody else have any questions or need for clarification? Yes, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. Who would have thought fifteen hundred stops, right? But um, I think I just am trying, so it's about a three, you're estimating about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars total cost, is that right?
Approximately, yeah.
Okay, estimating that.
Okay, and can and and maybe this is a long question. Can you help us understand or help me understand the American whatever fund cash bucket that you're talking about?
Sure, the the city's anticipating receiving some dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act. And though the use of those funds is actually restricted right now to water sewer and broadband infrastructure. But as we comb through the CIP, we have portions of projects, for example, the Uptown Streetscape project where part of that project is the replacement of sanitary sewer. So if we apply the cash from that project to that or from the American Rescue Plan to that, that frees up bond dollars that we already had planned that could go towards the the cost of doing the stump removals. So we're applying it where we can under the legal restrictions for it, but that gives us more room to use some of those other planned dollars for other purposes.
The reallocation.
Correct.
Oh, government.
Thank you.
You have anything else? Good question. Okay, anyone else? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, well, again, my opinion as I think you're getting a lot of feedback about it, I would one hundred percent support getting it done sooner than later. But for clarification, when you talk about two seasons, are you talking about calendar year twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two? Are those the two seasons you're talking about?
Correct. We would, we would seek to select the vendor and create or finalize a contract within this current season. We can't necessarily guarantee work allow allowance through the winter because snow accumulation causes issues. So it will for sure track over into two thousand and twenty two with hopeful completion by the fall of that year.
Yeah, I just got my stump in my front yard cleaned up last week, so I know how much work it is. So it's quite a bit of work and that was not in the right of way. That was in my front yard. So it's a lot of work. So I know a lot of people want to get it done, get it behind them and move forward. So I would certainly support that direction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Just a quick question, Mike, on that. So if we put that out for a bit on that, we would have some stipulations as far as, you know, it's not going to get drug out. We're not going to see periods of time where there's, they've taken on, you know, other projects, other places. We want to make sure there's committed to this and make sure we get in and get out and done in a timely fashion so that it's not lingering on is would that be a correct assumption?
Yes, that's accurate. From my experience with stump removal, the two priorities are quality of work and timeline.
Right, exactly. Because I can see this being, you know, this would be a, this is a huge quantity deal. So obviously, you know, they're going to want to try to knock as many of these out, but basically we'd hate to see this go into a third season because we didn't hold them to a contract. So thank you. There you are daily losses.
Anyone else, Grant?
Yeah, on that, on that very point, I would, I would think that the expertise of Mr. Barkalow could help engineer a a some language into your RFP to stipulate that that's going to be employed.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
While you're up here. I have I have with me here the letter from the Arbor Day Foundation, like recognizing the city for our Tree City USA recognition again, which is I don't know, many years in a row. But anyway, so thank you for your work on on gaining this recognition again. So
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? Yes, go ahead.
I was just gonna say I'd be in favor of moving forward right now to to request the RFP.
So we can put that on the agenda for Thursday and have that as an item to vote on. Did Renee have any questions?
No, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, do you have anything else for us?
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you very much. I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. I would just note that there's a closed session on Thursday, so please plan for that. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss an item? Oh, Armour Drive. Mike, just wanted to come back one more time.
You thought you were done with me. So I'll go back a little bit in time. It's in your your council packet, but back in October sixth of twenty sixteen, a city council gave us direction to move forward with condemnation. We had a condemnation hearing that awarded them four hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. They appealed that amount. However, we were able to build the street. So the street's been in for a few years. It's been used. We then had a jury trial on August nineteenth, twentieth and twenty one of twenty nineteen. From that jury trial, they awarded them eighty two thousand nine hundred. Obviously, it's less than the the four thirteen five ninety. So they then appealed that. We just received notice last week that the upheld that appeal of the eighty two nine hundred. So because that was already approved by resolution two seven nine one four, we held that check because they appealed it and we didn't want to cut the check. So now we're going to go ahead and cut the check now that they've lost the appeal. And hopefully we're done. There is another appeal that they can do, but I believe it goes to the Supreme Court. I don't know if they'll want to do that, but they can appeal again, but we're hoping that we're done. So just giving you a quick update.
Any questions?
So let me make sure I've got this right since this predated my membership on council. So we were going to pay four hundred and thirteen thousand.
We wrote them a check for that amount, yes.
And they didn't like that. So it went to trial and the determination was it should be eighty two thousand nine hundred.
Correct.
Okay.
And then they appealed that and it was upheld.
Yes.
No, so we avoided that four hundred and thirteen thousand dollar check.
Interesting cycle of activity there.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll see you on Thursday. The meeting is adjourned.